Ladies and gentlemen, we'll get started any minute. If we could have a little bit of order in chambers. Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, if we could have order in chambers. We have one little item that we would like to take care of this evening. A young lady here tonight has decided to spend her 70th birthday with us this evening, and we would like to honor her. So if I could get everybody to round a nice round of happy birthday for her.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mary. Happy birthday to you.
The Stratford Zoning Commission is now open for public hearing for those petitions advertised to be heard at this session. To be noted for the record that Ms. Manos will be alternate member seating tonight for Ms. Phillips, regular member. I wish to announce that any items on tonight's agenda take more time than anticipated. This public hearing may conclude at 11:00 p.m. to be continued at another date, which will be established at that time. Any items not heard by 11:00 p.m. tonight will be heard at the continued public hearing. For the record, petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on February 14th and February the 21st. These properties were duly posted on February the 20th. Ms. Manos, if you would be so kind as to read the first petition.
Mr. Chairman, could we take items 1, 2, 3, and 4 as one presentation, if we may?
Yes, we can do that.
It's all the same project.
Mr. Knott, before you get started, I just want one more slight thing here. If I could see a show of hands, how many of the public are here tonight because they read this in the newspaper? All right, thank you. That's about six or seven. Thank you. Mr. Knott, if you'd just clarify that item number four is for the same application?
Yes, item number four is the relocation of the Barrett sign, which is a new public hearing being heard for the first time tonight. Items 1, 2, and 3 are continuation of public hearings that were heard at last month's meeting, which we kept open because we were waiting for some documentation from DEEP, which we have since received.
This set of exhibits is for your, item number four on the agenda, though, your new item?
Yes. Correct. Although there is, there are a couple of exhibits in that packet that relates to the items that were heard last month. Specifically, there's a letter, an email from John Goucher at DEEP, which was the exhibit we were waiting for from last month's meeting, and that is Exhibit 11. Are we ready? Good evening, Ms. Manos, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and Jay. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer representing Erstad Biddle Properties of 321 Railroad Avenue Greenwich, the owner of what you know as the Dock Shopping Center. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits to which I have handed, which I have handed to each of you and to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. And as I just indicated, this presentation that I'm making right now is a continuation of the public hearing that we had last month on a zone text amendment dealing with the height of buildings in a MA zone. It was a zone text amendment allowing for the relocation of commercial signs under very limited circumstances, and it was a special case application for a 121,000 square foot self-storage facility and a CAM application also for the self-storage facility. That application was heard in its entirety last month. I asked that it be continued until this month because we were still awaiting a report from the DEEP regarding groundwater issues, which report has now been received and is Exhibit 11 in the folder that I have just handed to you. Now Exhibit 1 in that folder, just to refresh your recollection, is a photo of Sydney Street taken from across the street in the Home Depot Shopping Center. And you can see a large commercial sign that appears to be sticking out of a garage roof that is located on property at 28 Sydney Street. That property is owned by Jack's Company, which is a subsidiary of Barrett Outdoor Communication, Inc. John and Bruce Barrett are here with me this evening, and they will discuss issues relating to the sign in a moment. Exhibit 2 is another photo of Sydney Street. Once again, it's a closer view of the sign, which is the subject of tonight's application. Exhibit 3, another photo of the sign taken from a different perspective. Exhibit 4, another photo of the sign taken from the rear of Sydney Street, and you can see that this sign abuts I-95 and is essentially, serves as a commercial advertising sign addressed towards cars going east and west on I-95. Now, this relocation application that you're hearing for the first time tonight is the second phase of a three-phase development plan, which I discussed with you at last month's meeting. The first phase of which is the approval of the self-storage facility, the second phase of which is the approval to relocate the commercial sign, and the third phase of which is for a special case and CAM approvals to construct two nationally recognized restaurants on that portion of Sydney Street property at the corner of East Main Street. Tentatively speaking, those two restaurants are going to be Panera Bread and Starbucks. As you know, we had a public hearing last month on Phase 1, which was the self-storage And we kept it open for tonight in case any questions were raised by any members of the public or the commissions and to await that email from Goucher, which we have now received. Now Exhibit 5 of the handout is a global site plan of the Dock Shopping Center, where I have highlighted in yellow all the Sydney Street properties shown in the photographs, which are the subject of this application. You can see from this exhibit how the properties, which are the subject of this application, juxtapose with the balance of the Dock Shopping Center property. You will notice immediately to the right of the Sydney Street properties is located I-95, which essentially bisects the Dock Shopping Center and separates it into two parcels, one of which is known as Rail Side, which is the parcel upon which the Stop and Shop store is located and which is located next to the railroad tracks. The other side is known as Dock Side, and that's the parcel upon which BJ's Edge Fitness, Joey C.'s Restaurant, and the Marina are located adjacent to the Houston River. Now, in addition to the continuation of last month's public hearing, tonight's hearing is also an application for special case and site plan review to allow for the relocation of the Barrett commercial sign under the limited circumstances set forth in the proposed zone text amendment that you heard last month, allowing for the relocation of commercial signs. Specifically, that zone text amendment, which I presented to you last month, would allow for the relocation of commercial signs under certain limited circumstances. That proposed zone text amendment says, "A commercial sign which pre-existed the enactment of this regulation is permitted, subject to special case approval, to be relocated from its original location to another location on the same property, rebuilt or replaced to updated standards or technology, provided the display area is of the same dimension as the pre-existing sign, and as the signs adjacent to I-95, the display area is the same height above I-95 as the original sign." So we are not creating a new vehicle by which new commercial signs can be constructed in Stratford with this zone text amendment. We're simply allowing for existing commercial signs to be moved from one location to another, subject to special case approval. Now, in this case, I think we have a very valid reason for wanting to do this, as I'll show you in a minute, with our site development plan. Another person could come in and ask to relocate a commercial sign, not have a valid reason for it, and because it would be subject to special case approval, you could deny it if you did not feel that it was appropriate. As I mentioned, tonight's presentation represents the second phase, which will be a three-phase application. Exhibit 6 is a colored site plan showing the completed Phases 1, 2, and 3. You can see that the self-storage facility is in the back of the triangle, and it extends all the way over to I-95. There's a roadway that runs under it. And then in the front on East Main Street, on the left, you've got the Panera Bread building; on the right, you've got the Starbucks building. And I've highlighted in yellow the Barrett property, where that sign and Two Family House is currently located. I'm showing you this exhibit because I want you to see how important the relocation of that sign is to the development of this property, because the Barrett property and that sign is located dead smack in the middle of the area that we're trying to redevelop here. Exhibit 7 is a site plan showing the relocation of the Barrett sign to the rear of the parcel. This is the application that I am here for tonight. And you can see, I've highlighted in yellow the existing commercial sign in the bottom left of this exhibit, which is located on 28 Sydney Street, the Barrett property. And I've shown the secondary location to the upper right, which shows the sign being relocated into that little triangular area, all the way to the rear of Sydney Street. This is the proposed location to which the sign will be moved. Exhibit 8 is a site plan showing our global development plan, once again showing Phases 1, 2, and 3. And once again, you can see, I've highlighted in yellow the sign on the Barrett property currently, and I've highlighted in yellow the triangular piece to the upper right, showing where the sign will be relocated. And as I indicated, the proposed Starbucks is located on the parcel on the southwest corner of East Main Street and Sydney Street. Exhibit 9 is another version of the same site plan. This one, however, I've removed the Barrett property from the equation, and you can see we've now created parking lot, shrubbery, trees, and other landscaping in the area where the Barrett property is currently located. This Exhibit 9 will be what this project will look like at such time as all of these applications have been approved. Nice, clean development. The Barrett sign pushed way back from East Main Street, no longer visible to traffic passing on East Main Street. The only people to whom that Barrett sign will be visible in the future will be people traveling on I-95. So just to be clear, the development of this Sydney Street property is going to occur in three phases, the first of which was heard last month, continued to tonight, the second phase of which is being heard tonight, which deals with the relocation of the Barrett sign, and the third phase of which deals with the Panera Bread and Starbucks restaurants, which will be submitted in the next few months and heard later this spring. Tonight's public hearing and the continued public hearing deals only with the zone text amendment regarding the height of the building and a light industrial zone, the zone text amendment providing for the relocation of commercial signs under limited circumstances, the special case CAM and soil and erosional applications for Phase 1, the self-storage facility, and Phase 2, the sign relocation. Now, I'm not going to put in any additional evidence regarding the special case application for the self-storage facility or the proposed zone text amendments, which were heard at last month's meeting. You heard them before. I've kind of beaten it to death at this point. If any of you have questions regarding anything that was proposed regarding the self-storage facility or things that were brought up at last month's meeting, I do have my engineering staff here this evening, who will be able to address comments that you may have. In the meantime, I want to introduce Mr. John Barrett, who will discuss the construction of the sign, structural integrity, and details having to do with the mechanics of the sign construction. John?
I'm John Barrett, partner in Barrett Outdoor Communications. It was our company that built the current sign and under the plan to build the new replacement for it. I believe there was some concern expressed at the last meeting regarding the safety of these, so I can give you a brief history. That sign was built in 1980. 1980, the Connecticut Building Code was at 30 pounds per square foot, and that would put the sign, if we built it by building code, to withstand 80 miles an hour. Now, I grew up around here. 80 miles an hour does not cut it. That sign was built for 120 miles an hour, substantially over the Connecticut Code. Now, the Connecticut Code has come up to my standard. It's still not good enough. So the new sign is built to be even stronger than 120 miles per hour of wind. Now, the structures are built literally to last forever. The column goes into over 100 yards of concrete with very detailed soil analysis underneath to make sure there's, it will withstand not only softening from rain, it will also withstand earthquakes. We are in an earthquake zone, so we will withstand pretty much anything you can throw at it. The steel is galvanized, so it does not rust, doesn't look bad from the street. The materials, again, are all steel welded under a program called special inspections. That is where we are functioning in an area above what the building official is certified to work in, and so we have third-party engineers who visit the fabrication plant, check the certifications of all the welders, have ultrasonic inspections of all the welds, serial numbers on all the steel, tracing it back to make sure it's of the right quality and type, going all the way back to the reinforcing rod and all the elements in the concrete. So these are very high-strength structures that exceed most of things that are built around Connecticut. I also have with me for you is a letter from R. Scott Lewis. He is our structural engineer. Little background on him, if you've been through Times Square and those parts of New York where you see all that signage, he's the primary engineer that designs all of that, and as well as the preferred engineer by the MTA for all structures that interact with the subway system. So in short, Scott again goes through and says that the structure is built to last more than 100 years and will withstand pretty much whatever we're going to throw at it, and that the new sign will exceed that. Can I have this just for your files?
At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bruce Barrett, who will address you regarding other issues relating to the sign. Bruce?
My name is Bruce Barrett, partner with my brother, John. When I was in high school, I sat on that billboard at Sydney Street and helped bolt it together, while John worked with the engineers to design it. So I know the structure very well. I think what I'd like to say is that we've worked very hard with Erst Biddle to find a win-win solution, something that can work for all of us. To leave the sign there and build the self-storage company would be harmful for everyone. The sign itself will be blocked by the self-storage company, dropping our value. Our transmission antennas on the sign will also be blocked, dropping our value, and it would not meet the standards for a special case because we would be harmed. And I can give you lots of evidence to that effect. The sign needs to be moved in order for the storage company to abide by the terms for a special case, the conditions, which is that it not drop the tax value of the surrounding properties. We'd be severely harmed if the storage company were approved and the sign not approved. And we've worked with Erst Biddle to come up with that relocation, and I just want to show you what it looks like to sort of see. I read Jay's comments and want to address them briefly with you. So here's a little packet. So this is an aerial, I mean, did I give you enough? Everyone have one there? So on the, I have a couple more, a few more? So the point of the letter you got from Scott Lewis is that this billboard that's there is going to be there for 100 years or more. It will not come down under any circumstances unless we take it down. We own the billboard company and the land underneath, and will continue to be there. In the map on the top, you see an aerial photograph, and then the plot plan for the storage company imposed on it, and red is the self-storage facility. And where it says View 1, you see a green triangle, that's the current billboard, and you can see that the billboard blocks the view of the storage company for traffic going north. Now, if we move the sign to location number 2, we're just going to do the same thing in the other direction. We're going to have the sign interfere with the view of the storage company for traffic going south. So whether it sits where it is now or whether we move it to the location, we're still going to have a sightline issue. So when Jay spoke in his comments, he's concerned about the sightline. We're going to have a sightline issue regardless of where it goes. It's really a question of which sightline do you prefer, the billboard where it is or the billboard moved? Clearly, the billboard moved is a better sightline. And the reason for that is you're not going to see it from East Main Street anymore. And I think that's what you really want to think about. So on the second page, underneath that map, you can see a view of the sign from East Main Street, and you can see the antennas off the top of it. That's what it looks like now. That's our property, that's what it'll stay unless we can move it. Now, if we move it, just the sign portion, on the next page, you can see I've taken the billboard off, and there's just a pole with some antennas on it, and that's what it would look like when the signs moved. But now you'd have a Starbucks, and you'd have, what else is going on in Starbucks?
Panera Bread.
Right, a Panera Bread and a whole development instead of the house. And then finally, when approved, we would move the entire antenna off of the property as well. And the long-term goal, we have, again, with Erst Biddle, an agreement to move the antenna to the far side of the property where you still wouldn't see it. So in the last picture, you see what it looks like when the project's complete. And on the last page, you see a large photograph, or not photograph, the plot plan. In yellow on the bottom left is the sign where it is. Moved up is the sign where it's going to be moved if you approve it. And far away, 1,000 feet farther north, is where the cell tower will be moved when the Site Council approves that. The application looks tremendous. So I think what we're trying to do, and what we've successfully done, is build a win-win here where the town of Stratford gets a development they really love, and we're not harmed as a billboard company by having something that would block the transmission antennas and block the view. Because we're all doing this as one application, I'm not going to present to you detailed evidence unless you wish on how the billboard is harmed. Basically, I have photographs showing how the building would block it, and also letters from the wireless communications individuals explaining how it would damage their transmission ability and the rent to the property would go down. But I don't want to waste your time with that if this is indeed, as I understand, one application. But do you have any questions for us in terms of the billboard, why it would be better to move it to this location?
I have one question. I don't know if it's for you or for Mr. Knott. It's been brought to our attention that the cell tower relocation is not part of the original application?
That's correct.
No, the cell tower relocation is something that's got to be approved by the Connecticut Siting Council, and that's far off in the future.
It would have to be a phased-in project. The sign would come down and the cell tower later when that's approved. We have contracts all lined up and ready to go. You know, I can't speak for another committee, but it'd be hard to imagine them not approving it for two basic reasons. One is that they need the extra transmission abilities, and the new tower would provide it. They'd like to put it in a place that's away from residents and far in a corner, and that's exactly what we have here. So there's a demand for it and a desire on the part of the utilities to do that. So it's just a matter of time and working it through and everyone working together.
Thank you, Bruce.
So, Mr. Knott, so we're on the same page, that this is not part of, the cell tower relocation is not part of the application, but it's going to go to the Siting?
That's right.
And then come back to us?
And that could be six months from now, it could be nine, you know, nine months from now, depending upon how long that takes. But that's not part of this discussion at all, other than you need to be aware that that's going to happen at some point in time when the Siting Council gets around to it.
Any, Mr. Silhavy?
I think most of the questions actually you got, but just going down that road, I know in the past, the zoning commission, we've been, occasionally, we've had to send recommendations to the Siting Council on different proposed cellular areas. Would, considering that, just looking at the exhibit here where you have just like the empty pole that still has the towers on it, and it seems like it's all connected, would it, would you consider it an advantage for the zoning commission to recommend to the Siting Council that they approve that relocation?
Absolutely. Yes, definitely. I haven't quite finished my presentation, if I may. At this time, I'd like to discuss the, thank you for that suggestion, Chris. The administrative comments. Fire Department, Building Department, Public Works Department, Engineering Department, Economic Development Department, and Conservation Department all had no comment. Lieutenant Gugliotti of the Stratford Police said, "The plans look good, and I see no reason why it cannot move forward. It does not appear that traffic on East Main Street will be impacted negatively." Mr. John Goucher of the DEEP, who is the guy that reviews the CAM applications and the gentleman whose report we were waiting for, in response to the CAM application, said, "We've reviewed the above referenced proposal to relocate a commercial sign for consistency with the Connecticut Coastal Management Act policies and have no comments for the zoning commission's consideration." The Health Director in her administrative comments recapitulated all of the testing that has been done in the Sydney Street property over the years with respect to the existence of Raymark Waste and made certain recommendations with respect to the property owner engaging in LEP and notifying Connecticut Deep prior to any demolition activity. We were made aware of these concerns prior to last month's public hearing, and I addressed them at that time. My client is aware of the extensive testing and plans to incorporate the Health Director's recommendations into its sign relocation plans as well. Now... So what your approval will do here is to allow the existing sign to be relocated from its current location at 28 Sydney Street to another location on the Sydney Street property. That location is shown on Exhibit 7, way down the back rear corner of the Sydney Street property, out of sight and away from East Main Street. However, as my proposed regulation indicates, such a relocation is not automatic. It requires special case approval, giving you the right to act on any such application on a case-by-case basis. And that's important. You're not setting any precedence here by going along with this proposal. If this proposal makes sense to you because of economic development reasons or the elimination of blight, which are two very valid reasons to approve this, then you should approve it. If it doesn't, then you shouldn't. So you take every application on its own merits. In his administrative comments, Jay suggests that it would be considered a major change to the zoning regulations if you choose to approve this proposed tax amendment because you would now be permitting commercial signs in both the commercial and light industrial districts. I disagree with Jay's interpretation of what we are proposing. You would not be permitting commercial signs in the zones. You would be permitting the relocation of a pre-existing, non-conforming commercial sign from one location to another location under very strict limitations. No new commercial signs will be created as a result of the zone tax amendment. The approval of the zone tax amendment will not open up the floodgates to cause sign owners to move their signs from one location on the property to another. I can say this with a certain degree of confidence, because as I said at last month's meeting, it's going to cost $250,000 to move this sign from where it is now to where we're planning on cooking. You've just got to look at those pictures of the sign. This thing is a monumental structure. I mean, it's unbelievable. In our case, it's worth it, because we get to eliminate a street which has existed in a blighted condition for the past two or three decades. We get to create a commercial redevelopment which is going to benefit significantly the neighborhood and add significantly to the tax base. The anticipated cost of construction of all three phases of this project is approximately $14 million, and as anticipated, will result in the addition of between 40 and 50 jobs in the three facilities to be constructed, as well as additional jobs-related benefits that will occur to the local trades during the construction phase. Certainly, the benefit to be derived from the approval of this Mata Zone Tax Amendment far outweighs any particular prejudice that may result. Now, I want to discuss the special case approval criteria under Section 20.2.1. First one is the proposed use shall be in conformance with all requirements in the district in which it is located. Here, under the proposed zone tax amendment, we are talking about a permitted use in a zone in which the proposed structure is proposed to be located. Secondly, the location size and intensity of such use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. Here we have a sign which is currently in non-conforming use in the light industrial zone, which is an eyesore, easily visible from East Main Street and adjacent to an existing shopping center. Approval of this application, move this eyesore away from publicly traveled roads into a far corner of Sydney Street will only be visible to I-95. It is certainly compatible in relation to the neighborhood development. Next one. The design location-specific details shall not adversely affect safety in the streets or increased traffic in the area. Lieutenant Gugliotti has indicated that there are no traffic issues with this application. Number five. The emission of noise like smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. Certainly, there is no more benign or quiet use of a property than that which we are proposing. Six. The proposed use shall not adversely affect the tax valuation of neighboring properties. Here we have a situation where a whole blighted neighborhood will be completely razed, and modern commercial structures will be constructed to replace the blight. With the exception of the so-called Walmart/Home Depot shopping center across the street, my client owns all of the abutting neighborhood properties, including the Dock Shopping Center. The tax valuation of neighboring properties will only increase as a result of this proposal, not decrease. There was an article in the Connecticut Post last week, John Burderson wrote, celebrating the fact that we were coming in with this proposal because he's happy to see that the Sydney Street blight is finally going to be dealt with. Thank you, John, for that article. The proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards. As indicated by their lack of administrative comments, neither the Police Department nor the Fire Department had any problem with respect to this proposal. Finally, Exhibit 10 is a letter from the Stratford Waterfront Commission. We met with them on February 14th, and they approved a motion informing you and us that the Harbor Management Commission had no objection to the proposal, as it is not expected to have a significant effect on the Stratford Harbor. Finally, as I indicated during last month's hearing, our engineers have been going back and forth with Mr. John Goucher of DEEP for the past couple of months regarding stormwater issues. Mr. Goucher had requested that certain borings be done in order to determine how well the soils drain. This has been done by our engineers, who have provided the results to Mr. Goucher. Exhibit 11 is an email from him to Jay dated today, in which he indicates his satisfaction with our drainage proposal. For all of these reasons, I believe that the two applications for zone tax amendment, the special case application for the self-storage facility, the special case application to relocate the Barrett sign, and the CAM applications should be granted. There is no downside component to this proposal. A blighted condition will be removed from the neighborhood, and a significantly valuable commercial development will replace it, adding to what is already a very successful shopping center. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Hendrick?
Can you refresh my memory? I was looking for it, my paperwork. The text change to the maximum allowable height of a building?
Yes. Currently, 10-point, whatever it is, says building height in an MA zone. It says three stories dash 60 feet. Three stories, 60 feet. That's inconsistent with itself, because a 60-foot building has more than three stories, and a three-story building is usually less than 60 feet. So by, what I'm proposing to do is eliminate this reference to three stories, so that it simply says 60 feet.
Okay, gotcha. And in reference to the text change for this sign, Item 3, you talk about providing the display area as the same dimension as the pre-existing sign, and as the signs adjacent to I-95, the display area is the same height above I-95 as the original sign. It doesn't talk anything about heights of commercial signs not adjacent to I-95. And what I'd like to see added is, for signs, something along the lines of, for signs not located on I-95, not to exceed the existing height above sea level or above zero?
Well, here's the problem, the problem with that, Mike. Where the sign is located now, the elevation of I-95 is five or seven feet low.
I'm not talking about signs adjacent to I-95?
Oh, all right.
I'm talking about signs that are not located or adjacent to I-95. Like the sign in Lordship, on your way entering into Lordship, or the signs on both sides of the train tracks on Main Street. So we do have other, we do have other commercial signs that are not adjacent to I-95? So for those signs, I would like to see a tech?
We would have no problem with that.
Okay. Just, and that regulates, because what your text would allow somebody to do, say the one in Lordship, they could move it to another spot on the property, but then elevate it, you know, another 40 feet. There's no regulation?
Yeah, no, I got no problem with that. Thank you.
Any further questions from the commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Thank you.
Anybody who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close by Mr. Solhavy, second by Mr. Vacola. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? So moved. Chris, would you like to read Items 5, 6? 5 and 6, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Five, Petition Number 5, 577 Holly Lane, Petition of Par 1 Development LLC, seeking special case and site plan review approval to establish a full-service restaurant in a CF zone. An erosion and sediment control application has been submitted for administrative review. Petition Number 6, 577 Holly Lane, Petition of Par 1 Development LLC, seeking approval of a liquor location to establish a Class D restaurant liquor permit for a full-service restaurant in a CF zone.
Good evening, Ms. Manos, Madam Secretary, Mr. Chairman. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn, with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford. This time, I'd like to submit the certificate of mailing, and make reference to a folder of exhibits, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first five of which are photos of the subject premises. The address of this premises, of this house, is 577 Holly Lane. And it's located directly across the street from one of the entrances to the Marriott Hotel. As you can see, Exhibit 1 is a photo taken from the exit of the Marriott Hotel, looking across the street at some tall pine trees, behind which you can see, hardly see, a gray house that's got a car parked in the driveway behind it. That gray house is the subject of this application. Exhibit 2 is another photo of the same premises, taken from Holly Lane, looking back towards the Big Y Shopping Center. Now, you can see that office building just to the left of that orange sign. That office building is the medical building that is located to the left of the entrance driveway into the Big Y Shopping Center. And the house that's the subject of this application is behind those trees there on the left. You can see the car in the backyard again. Exhibit 3 is a photo of the medical building that I just, you just saw in the other photo. I just, now we're looking back towards this house. Exhibit 4 is a photo of this property. Once again, it's hidden behind these tall pine trees, and this is a perspective taken looking towards Huntington Road. And finally, looking back towards Nichols Avenue from Huntington Road, the property is located just to the right of this little condominium project that's located on Holly Lane, the Holly Glen condos. Exhibit 6 is an aerial photograph taken of the subject property, which I've highlighted in red. That red, long red rectangular piece of property is the 3.2 acre site that represents the property. And the numbers that I've got written on this Exhibit 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6 are the locations from which the first five exhibit photos were taken. Now, Exhibit 7 is a copy of the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council Geographic Information Map for the area surrounding the subject premises. Please note that the subject premises is shaded in gray and outlined with a black marker. As you can see from this exhibit, the site is located immediately to the north of the medical building at 495 Holly Lane, and is located two parcels to the north of the Northtown Shopping Center, also known as the Big Y Shopping Center. It is located directly across the street from the entrances to the Marriott Hotel and another office building known as the Waynak Group. Further up Holly Lane, towards Huntington Road, are properties owned by the State of Connecticut, which was acquired by eminent domain about 15 years ago when they straightened out Holly Lane. Two condominium projects, one consisting of nine units, one consisting of about 40 units. Exhibit 8 is an existing condition survey of the property as it now exists. This is the house. This is a single-family house currently on the site. The site consists of 139,390 square feet, or 3.2 acres. There is 224 feet of road frontage on Holly Lane. The lot extends back 1,168 feet on the southwesterly boundary and 1,350 feet on the northwesterly boundary. You will note that this exhibit contains two components. One, that is a rectangular box at the top of the page depicting the whole lot, which I have outlined in pink. The second component is shown to the bottom of the page, and reflects only that area of the lot upon which the existing one-story frame house and lawn are located, and the proposed development will occur. You will note that I have highlighted in blue a boundary around the potentially developable area of the lot. This blue line represents the encroachment of inland wetlands into the site from all directions. Because of this wetlands encroachment, the developable area of this lot is limited to the first few hundred feet back from Holly Lane, and was subject to an Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission approval, which we have now received. Exhibit 9 is the proposed site development plan, showing a single-story, 250-square-foot single-tenant structure, proposed for a full-service restaurant use with a Class D restaurant liquor permit on the site, including a 400-square-foot outdoor patio seating 16. As you can see from Exhibit 8, which was the previous exhibit, this is a long but narrow 3.2 acre parcel, of which only 23,696 square feet, or 0.17 acres, is being used for this proposed development. So the property's 3.2 acres, we're only using 0.17 acres of it for this development. The other three acres are going to be encumbered by a conservation easement, and will remain in their natural state in perpetuity.
Mr. Knott, can you, can we ask the folks in the audience, please, if you're going to have a conversation? Ma'am? It's very distracting up here, and I'm having a hard time hearing. If you have a conversation, could you please take it outside? Thank you.
So we are talking about 36 full-size parking spaces, two ADA-compliant handicap spaces, together with a loading berth for deliveries. A 10-foot-by-7-foot enclosed dumpster pad, city sewers, storm drainers, electric gas, telephone cable, and fiber optics are available at the site. The property is located directly on Holly Lane, midway between the intersection of Nichols Avenue and Holly Lane to the west, and the intersection of Huntington Road and Holly Lane to the east. It is located directly across the street from the entrance driveway to Trumbull Marriott. It abuts to the north, the 15-acre site which contains the 118,000-square-foot shopping center known as Northtown Center, or the Big Y Shopping Center. Diagonally across the street from this proposed location is a 340,000-square-foot regional shopping center on the Trumbull side of the street, anchored by Target, Kohl's, Home Goods, Best Buy, and others. Now, in January of 2017, the zoning commission changed the zone of this property from RS3 to CF. CF is considered a limited business zone because of the permitted uses in that zone are very limited, and all uses require special case approval by you. Exhibit 10 is a copy of the zoning commission's zone change approval letter dated February 1st, 2017. As mentioned above, this proposed use required approval from the Stratford Inland and Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, which was received on December 20th, 2017, after a public hearing in November of 2017. Exhibit 11 is a copy of that wetlands approval letter. Now, at this time, I want to discuss the administrative comments. The Fire Department, Building Department, Engineering Department, Conservation Department, Public Works Department, Economic Development Department, all had no comments. Lieutenant David Gugliotti of the Police Department said, "I have reviewed the plans for 5577 Holly Lane, and do not see an issue as of right now. I don't see why the restaurant project cannot move forward." Maureen Whalen of the Health Department wrote, "A full plan review and menu are required to be submitted to the Health Department. specification sheets are needed for all restaurant equipment. A dumpster with a four-inch concrete pad and chain link finks with privacy slats is required. Not opposed to the concept." Not opposed to the concept." Obviously, Maureen's request will be complied with by my client, and the dumpster pad has already been incorporated into our site plans. In his administrative review, Jay makes the following comments. "The surrounding area consists of commercial development with this parcel being one of the only remaining residential uses in the immediate area. The request for a restaurant liquor permit is somewhat typical of similar dining establishments and, if approved, should adhere to all state liquor control requirements. The Office of Planning and Zoning has no issues regarding the approval of the sought-after liquor permit as Class D liquor permits are permitted in a CF zone." Jay then inquired about the hours of operation, which will be from 5:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. He suggested all light poles proposed for the parking lot should be selected based upon their ability to limit ambient light pollution that might impact the bargaining property owners and wetland species. This issue came up with our wetlands commission approval, and the applicant agreed as a condition of that approval to provide such restricted lighting. Finally, Jay requested that the applicant obtain a letter from a licensed engineer ensuring that the project's compliance with the Town of Stratford MS4 stormwater permit will be adhered to, and once again, that issue was raised at the wetlands commission, and the applicant has agreed to provide such documentation. Finally, I want to discuss compliance with the special case approval criteria. The proposed use shall be in conformance with all requirements of the district in which it is located. Here we are proposing a permitted use in a commercial zone in an area that is already commercially developed. Number 2, the location, size, and intensity shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and neighborhood development. Once again, we are proposing only to use 0.17 acres of a 3.2-acre parcel. The balance of the site will be encumbered by a conservation easement, which will result in the remaining property continuing in its natural state in perpetuity. All of the area of this parcel which abuts residential neighborhoods will be covered by the conservation easement and protected in perpetuity. The proposed use shall be in conformance with the town plan of development. Once again, this is a permitted use under the existing zoning regulations and the town plan of development. The design location's specific detail should not adversely affect safety in the streets nor increased traffic congestion. As Lieutenant Gugliotti opined, "I have reviewed the plans. I do not see an issue as of right now. I don't see why the restaurant project cannot move forward." Reference also Exhibit 12, which is a traffic study done by Joseph Balkis, an engineer and director of transportation systems at VHB Engineering of Weathersfield, in which Mr. Balkis concludes, "Holly Lane is a collector roadway providing connections to major developments along the roadway, including the Trumbull Marriott across the street from the restaurant. Holly Lane is designed to carry this traffic volume, and just north of the site, it has daily traffic volumes of over 8,000 vehicles per day. There is just one reported crash in the area of the proposed site driveway reported in the last three years, according to UConn. The proposed site has ample site lanes that will generate less than one vehicle per minute in any peak hour, a fraction of the traffic carried on Holly Lane on a daily basis and during peak hours. In conclusion, the proposed development will not have a significant impact on traffic on Holly Lane. The emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration, this use should not result in any such negative consequences, and we've already agreed to use the low-impact lighting suggested by Jay. The proposed use shall not adversely affect tax valuation. Here, the applicant is just continuing the commercial development of both sides of Holly Lane, and this is one of the last parcels of undeveloped land on the street which will now complete its development. That which is being proposed is consistent with the neighborhood and will have no negative impact on tax valuation of neighboring properties. The proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards, and as I indicated from the administrative comments of both the Police and Fire Department, they have no issues for this proposed development. For all these reasons, I would ask for your favorable consideration to both the special case application and the application for a full restaurant liquor permit for this property. Thank you."
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I believe, just reviewing the maps, it appears that the only means of entry and exit is through the Big Y Plaza. Is that correct?
No, no, no.
No?
No, the entrance to this site has nothing to do with Big Y.
Maybe I looked it longer.
It's a driveway directly out onto Holly Lane into a 36-38 car parking lot. Exhibit...
Give me a number.
I think number 9 shows that, Chris.
Exhibit 9.
Okay, so it's separated then from the plaza?
Yes.
So, now, is there any anticipation of another traffic onto Holly Lane at that point?
No, no.
Or is it... So, this actually concerns me a little bit because you have three lanes. As you're approaching the area from Nichols Avenue heading north, you have three lanes. One's dedicated as you go into the Big Y Plaza, and then it narrows down very quickly down to two lanes. So, then, there's going to be another uncontrolled intersection as you go into the new development. Is that correct?
Well, not exactly. It's yes and no. Yes, in the sense that it's going to be an uncontrolled access into and out of this property, but no, in the sense that there's already the exit from the Trumbull Marriott dumping out onto Holly Lane in exactly the same location that this driveway is going to be going into this site. So, we're not talking about creating a new situation there because, as you can see from that first photo that I showed you, the property is located directly across the street from the Trumbull Marriott exit, and that's where the entrance to this site is going to be.
Okay, that's where the entrance is going to be. Okay, I see what you're saying now. Is there any way to connect into the Big Y Plaza? No?
No, definitely not. We are so limited to that 23,000-square-foot construction area because of the wetlands that completely surrounds this parcel. If you look at the Exhibit 8, I think, which is the existing condition survey, you can see I've drawn the wetlands line around the property.
Okay.
Exhibit 8, I think. And, you know, the only way in and out is what's shown on the proposed site plan. There's no room on that. We'd have to go through that medical building.
Yeah, I know. I'm just trying to see if there's any way that you could mitigate traffic backing up beyond that because is it two lanes or is it one lane at that point as you're going? I think it's actually one lane.
Identify. This is Jim Fitzpatrick.
James Fitzpatrick, 170 Morning, Delane, Stratford. At that intersection or at the entrance, the both entrances, it actually goes into two lanes going west, one lane going east, okay, onto Huntington Road at that point. You know, it's been like that forever. I mean, the owner right now has used that entrance for, you know, access egress since the '60s. So, there's been, you know, virtually no issues there as far as I know.
Thanks. I mean, as indicated in the traffic report, this site is not going to generate a lot of traffic. Small restaurant.
Small restaurant. Okay, so, and, yeah. Obviously, no drive-through, right?
No drive-through.
Okay. Didn't think so. Just asking. You never know.
No, no drive-through. A liquor permit, though.
A liquor permit, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hendrick?
One of your exhibits, I don't know if you had brought mention to it, was a picture of a, what I would call a retro-looking diner facility?
Yes. Do you want to address that?
Is that the intent?
That's kind of up in the air, but that's the thought at this point.
It was a thought because it's much easier if you purchase a retrofit diner than you call the factory up, they come and they put it on your foundation, and three days later you're in business. Not so sure I want to do that. I mean, I like the look of it, but I'm not so sure that that look actually fits the street, you know? I build nice things. I want to make sure this building here, if approved, is nice as well, so I want to have nice curb appeal. I also want it pleasing to the eye. I don't want it to be something that stands out too much, that'll actually, you know, shock people going down.
But an establishment like this doesn't have, if it was a similar establishment, just to speak to the traffic, doesn't have a large flow of traffic coming in and out on a regular basis like a McDonald's or a... Like the McDonald's across the street at, you know, and surprisingly enough, I travel Holly Lane quite a bit, there are very few times when the traffic on that road is overly congested or confused. You know, it seems to flow pretty well through there. With a large amount of commercial development that's on that street, it's surprisingly a pretty free-flowing street, so.
Just for the record, I'm pretty sure all know this, but Jim built the Big Y Shopping Center and the medical office building that's shown in those photographs. So, the quality of the buildings that he puts his name to are not something that's going to be an embarrassment to the town. He may be an embarrassment. His buildings won't be.
Hire the best.